I'm on.
You ready?
At least that's what they said on the show.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and call the Board Supervisors Meeting for January 3, 2023 together. And this is a reorg meeting. I will go ahead and take roll call. Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Ms. Roberts Lightcap.
Here.
Mr. Russo is absent. Mr. Alter.
Here.
Ms. Chanlis. And now that I've done that, the board, if they want to make nominations for a temporary chair.
I'll make a motion to nominate Catherine Chanlis or Supervisor Chanlis as a temporary secretary.
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor of Kathy as the temporary chair? Is that temporary secretary? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Should have been the other way around. Okay, temporary secretary. Okay, go ahead.
Aye.
Aye.
And then do we have any nominations for the temporary chair?
I would like to nominate Supervisor Partridge as temporary chair.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Partridge being the temporary chair.
Aye.
Aye.
Turn it over to you, Mr. Partridge.
Okay. We'll start with a moment of silence. I'd like everyone to have a moment of silence for Damar Hamlin. He's a safety for the Buffalo Bills who was critically injured last night in in the Monday Night Football game. So please keep him and his family in in your prayers. Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to move on to item number seven, the agenda. Does anyone have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
You have a motion from Supervisor Chanlis and a second from Supervisor Roberts Lightcap. Are there any other additions or comments about the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, guys have it. We're okay, moving on to item number eight, election of board officers. Eight, eight point one, election of chair. So like the open nominations for the chair for this coming year.
I'd like to nominate Supervisor Alteri.
Okay, nomination for Supervisor Alteri. Are there any other board nominations for chair? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Supervisor.
Second.
Oh, we have a
Do we need a second?
Okay, we have a second from Supervisor Chalice for Supervisor Alteri for chair. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're nothing. Congratulations Supervisor Alteri.
Thank you.
It's an exercise today.
Thank you very much Supervisor Partridge. Thank you very much to my colleagues. I'll hold off on, of course, I have some remarks I want to say, but let's do the election of a vice chair. There, can I get any nominations for a vice chair? I would like to nominate Supervisor Tina Roberts Lightcap. Are there any other nominations? Is there a second? Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. All those in favor of electing Supervisor Roberts Lightcap as the vice chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying no. The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The only thing I want to say is obviously thank you again to my colleagues on the board and congratulations again Supervisor Roberts Lightcap on her reelection to the board vice chair position. This board over the last year has accomplished a lot, and I look forward to us accomplishing even more in 2023. We have, in this budget alone, this board has invested into next year by the hiring of two new police officers, a part-time bookkeeper, part-time codes officer. We have brought in the set aside money to have a grant writer help this township go after grants that are available across the Commonwealth. We have increased the amount of contribution that we put towards our fire, fire truck apparatus replacement. We have increased our contribution yearly to the road program, you know, in the last seven years. This Board of Supervisors of the fifty-two miles of roadway that we own here in the township, we have redone or resurfaced, you know, around twenty-seven miles of that. That is because of the investments that this board has made and will continue to make to ensure that all of our roads are now going to be on a on a normal cycle since they weren't in the past. We also have increased our contribution yearly to the public works equipment that we need to make sure that the services that we provide as a township continue to make us the preeminent township in the township. And, you know, with regards to communication, which we know is a big thing of mine, we created the township newsletter. We are going to continue to utilize social media and other forms of technology to get news and information out to our residents, including that newsletter. And then obviously, one of the biggest ones is the environment. You know, this board, you know, I can't talk to to previous boards, but the the last couple of years, this board has invested in the environment. We are now part of the Sustainable Pennsylvania Coalition where we are silver certified municipality. We're two steps down from the highest level you can get. It looks at the entire form of government in the township, from the lights that we have to the HVAC systems, to the equipment that our computers are running off of, to the police, to the to the fleet of cars that we have. It is it is measuring our carbon footprint. That is the commitment that we have made, just one example towards the environment, including the commitment that we have made with the Environmental Resource Council to review all of our ordinances in the township to ensure that our planning and zoning codes are ones that are pushing for green initiatives and green infrastructure. So we've accomplished a lot, oh, and most importantly, through sound fiscal management, this board was able to achieve a triple A bond rating for Moody's. That is something that only one other municipality in this county has, and it's only one of that a handful in this entire Commonwealth has. And that is because of the strong fiscal management that this township has implemented over the last couple of years, and I commend my colleagues for the tough decisions that they've made. I look forward again, all of us to doing the work for this township to provide their services, to again, live up to our mission statement, which is to be the preeminent township here in Newtown Township. And with that, as I will be continuing to speak a lot throughout the night, I'll save the rest of my voice and we'll get down to section nine, the appointment to boards and commissions. Nine point one, planning commission, one, four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six Supervisor Roberts Lightcap.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Joel Edwards as a reappointment to the term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. I should note too, at the outset, we're going to take this all together. We'll do a second for all of them at the end. Supervisors that I'm calling on are the supervisors who are the liaisons to these different boards, everybody who had applied to a board or commission where there is a challenge, meaning it were a new person, they were all interviewed, and so the supervisor liaison along with another supervisor conducted those interviews. The the second one, four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six will be left blank or vacant because there are scheduling conflicts to get that second person interviewed. Zoning hearing board Supervisor Roberts Lightcap.
A reappointment of Ed Burgess to the term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven.
And for the zoning hearing board alternate.
Michael
Gutkin.
Gutkin, thank you, as a reappointment for the term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. And Charles Falcone, who is a new appointment for the term that expires twelve thirty-one, it's a it's an unexpired term that expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Municipal Authority Supervisor Chanlis.
Let's make a motion to appoint to one five-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, even that.
Environmental Advisory Council, the liaison to that is Supervisor Russo, who is not here, so I will fill in for him. For the unexpired term ending ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four will be Dane Shoemaker. For the one three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five Sheila O'Sullivan Feeny. For the one three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, that will be Joseph Pinto. Parks and Recreation Board Supervisor Partridge.
For a term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, W R Moscow.
Marple Newtown Leisure Services Supervisor Chanlis.
Okay, for one three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, Tom Rafferty, and that's a reappointment.
Trails and Greenways Committee is also Supervisor Russo, so I'll fill in for him. For the one unexpired term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five will be Joe Kasuka. For the one four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six Anthony DiVincenzo, who's a reappointment. For the one four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six Dr. Delia Archer is also a reappointment. Shade Tree Commission is also Supervisor Russo for the one five-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. John Rice, which is also a reappointment. Historic Preservation Commission will remain vacant as the one applicant who applied for that has been out of the country and we've been unable to interview him. Finance Committee, you want to take that one? Supervisor Roberts Lightcap.
For the unexpired term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, H. Scott Trotter. And for the five-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, a reappointment of Larry Fisher.
Bartram Bridge. That is, that you? Or I Supervisor Chanlis.
For a one-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, Ed Johnston.
Yeah, and the second one we're leaving blank because of schedule and conflict as well. Vacancy Board Chairman Supervisor Partridge.
For vacancy board term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, John McDevitt.
The delegate to the PSATs, Pennsylvania State Association Township Supervisors will be the Township Manager Stephen Nies. Representative to the CDCA will be John Gillan, who was a reappointment. And representative of the Council of Government is also the Township Manager Steve Nies.
I'd like to second all those appointments.
So the motion was made by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge to appoint to the various boards and commissions those names for sections for items nine point one to nine point seventeen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I I believe it was just to misspeak, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Under your zoning board alternate, I believe you listed Michael Gutkind.
Say it one more time.
I believe you listed Michael Gutkind.
Yes.
Michael Gutkind actually is serving till twenty twenty-four. The person that was going off was Mike Sheridan.
Okay. Well, then what we'll do is if so, Michael Gutkin is still on the
He's still on as an
So what we will do, if nobody has any opposition, we'll move Charles Falcone to the three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
Everybody fine with that?
Yes.
Yes.
So the motion was made by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap. You're fine with that addition?
Yes, thank you.
Seconded by Supervisor Partridge from nine point one to nine point seventeen. Is there any other issues that we have?
That that was the only one that I thought that
All is in favor. Is there any board discussion?
The other zoning hearing alternate is going to be blank.
The other zoning hearing alternate will be blank. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously, and thank you to those residents who have decided to step up and serve. We very much appreciate it. Board liaisons, I will list these off, so I will make the motion from ten point one to ten point fifteen, the following liaisons. Police will be Supervisor Ed Partridge. Non-uniform personnel will be Supervisor Kathy Chanlis. Police Pension Board and Non-Uniform Pension Board will be the chair. Planning Commission will be Supervisor Tina Roberts Lightcap. Zoning Hearing Board will be Tina Roberts Lightcap. Environmental Advisory Council will be Supervisor Russo. Parks and Recreation Board will be Supervisor Partridge. Historic Preservation Commission will be Supervisor Chanlis. Municipal Authority will be Supervisor Chanlis. Finance Committee will be Supervisor Tina Roberts Lightcap and myself. Trails and Greenways Committee will be Supervisor Russo. Leisure Services will be Supervisor Chanlis. Library Board will be Supervisor Russo. Marple Newtown School District will be myself. Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services will be myself as well. That is my motion. Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis for the board liaisons, items ten point one to ten point one five. Is there any board discussion? I will note that this is there's no change from last year's liaisons. We've kept everything the same. With that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. You all want me to do the same thing again, or do we want to? Yep. Section eleven Township Officials, eleven point one Township Solicitor, Richard C. Secor Esquire slash High Schwartz. Township Conflict Council, Raphael Popio. Township Engineer, Eric Johnson slash Panoni Engineers. Alternate slash Conflict Engineer, Catania Engineering. Is that the proper name for that? I know it's Charles Catania's firm. I don't know. It's just Catania Engineering. It is. Thanks, Eric. Township Manager slash Secretary slash Treasurer, congratulations to Stephen Nies. Chief Administrative Officer of the Pension Plan Fund will be Stephen Nies. Assistant Secretary will be Suzanne Valanam. Assistant Treasurer will be will remain blank as we have a finance director who's coming in and we need to get them bonded before we appoint them. Right to Know Officer will be Suzanne Valanam. Chief of Police will be Chief Christopher Lund. Roadmaster is George Sharitz. Zoning Officer slash Director of Code slash Building Code Official will be Andy Rezcheck. Assistant Zoning Officer is Stephen Nies. Building Code Official slash Assistant Zoning Officer is Commonwealth Codes. Fire Marshal will be Carl Keem. Assistant Fire Marshal will remain vacant as the township will interview the two candidates who have submitted their names for potential appointment. Search Enforcement Officer is Herbert E. McCumbey, consulting engineers and surveyors. Electrical Inspector is Commonwealth Code or United Electrical Inspectors. Emergency Management Coordinator is Dr. Gene Bale. Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator is Stephen Nies. Animal Warden Alan Strickler. Animal Shelter, Brandywine Veterinary Hospital. Appointed Auditor Mally LLP. Township Arborist John Rockwell Hosbach Jr. Slash Rockwell Associates. That is my motion. Is there a second? Motion was made by the chair to appoint the township officials that were just listed from eleven point one to eleven point two four. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now move down to section twelve minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the December twelve, two thousand twenty-two meeting?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section thirteen, payments, thirteen point one. Can I get a motion? Yes. No, because I watched the video. Payments, section thirteen, payments, thirteen point one, consider approving the eighty percent tuition reimbursement for spring and summer semester classes at Westchester University. Patrolman Daniel Strat, yeah, Daniel Strathy as part, as per the collective bargaining agreement totaling two thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section fourteen, bills. I have reviewed the bills, and so I will make the motion to approve the bills. I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two bills on check register A dated January third, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three totaling one hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. Is there a second? Motion is made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All is opposed, motion carries unanimously. I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two bills on check register B dated January third, two thousand twenty-three totaling twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Is there a second? Motion is made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. I will make a motion approving the twenty twenty-two bills on check registers.
Chairman, if I could interrupt you, we missed on the agenda having public comment for agenda items, and you're now covering agenda items that the public could comment on. You may want to at least open it up for that prior to continuing.
That sounds good. So I apologize on that, and if anybody has any comments for the last couple of comments with regards to payment and bills, the last couple of items regarding to the the tuition reimbursement of the last two motions and the bills, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and provide a public comment. I will also note that there was no public comment received in the Dropbox, excuse me, the email box. Yeah, right, the email address, and there was nothing provided in the public Dropbox. Last chance for any public comment. Seeing none, the record reflected there is no public comment. We'll move down to, I believe it was fourteen point three is where we left off, so I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two bills on check register C dated January third, two thousand twenty-three totaling four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. Is there a second? Motion is made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two bills on check register D dated January third, two thousand twenty-three totaling six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and seventy-six cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point five, I will make a motion approving the twenty twenty-two bills on EFT registered dated January third, two thousand twenty-three totaling seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Is there a second? Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section fifteen, new business. Fifteen point one, can I get a motion approving the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three holiday schedule as presented? Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge. Seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? We don't have to read these off, correct?
If you want to, the only note that I would make is that the last one on the holiday schedule is actually for twenty twenty-four as we've been doing in the past, just the New Year's cover that, so you don't have to redo that.
Understood. So again, that was posted on the township website, and I believe it's shown now on the screen.
Yes.
If there's any board discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifteen point two, can I get a motion approving the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Board and Commissions Meeting Schedules? Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. I think Supervisor Partridge wants to read all these off. Is that correct? You want to read your Yeah. All opposed, and is there any board discussion? Again, this is posted on the township website and will be up on the screen.
I would, I would make note that they're also authorizing us to advertise that. I don't think we actually said that in the agenda, but you're advertised.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifteen point three, can I get a motion approving the townships, two thousand twenty-two general liability, automotive, cyber, and workers' comp coverage with the respective carriers as noted below. Pennsylvania Manufacturers Association, general property, automotive, auto physical damage, law enforcement liability, public officials. Travelers Insurance Company, cyber, Berkeley National Insurance Company, umbrella, Wesco Insurance Company, workers' compensation slash heart and lung.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifteen point four, can I get a motion approving the purchase of an F two fifty truck with a F two fifty truck and plow excluding a spreader using proceeds from the sale of the public works vehicle from twenty twenty-two? Motion is made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? Eve or George, you want to add anything to this?
Unless you have a question.
Pretty self-explanatory. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifteen point five, consider authorizing the township engineer to perform the paving management survey at a cost of eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Steve, do you just want to touch base on this real quick?
Yeah, so we're very fortunate having brought on Panoni. They actually have a program, as I understand it. Fortunately, the engineers engineers here, if you want to ask more questions, but they can actually drive across our roadways, and it does a really different type of evaluation than what we can do just by visual look. It actually takes in and notes while driving along any areas that it sees that potentially have give and those kind of things, and so it it's a really good way to evaluate our roads, probably something that we'll do every three years or so going forward, and at this cost, we felt like it was important to do that prior to us making future decisions about which roads get paved first. This will give you a really clear direction based on the quality of the road by a, how how would I describe it? It's basically a program that evaluates the road condition.
Correct. I mean, it's basically you're utilizing computer learning like AI, so it evaluates the roads every ten feet and gives you a an assessment on a scale of one to five at ten-foot intervals for all fifty-three miles of the road. We use it in various, a whole bunch of municipalities actually, and it gives you a very objective, easy-to-view overview of what your roads look like, and it allows you to key into the particular areas lie on on a objective, not a subjective assessment of the road.
So if, you know, I have no problem with that, but I guess in terms of process. And correct me if I'm wrong, so the way I heard that is that it's essentially like a new, it's going to give us an inventory of what the roads are looking like so that we can then map out where they're going to be on the road program, correct?
Correct. I mean, if if you understand, we had actually talked about doing a reevaluation of all of our roads anyhow. This this program, instead of sending an engineer and, you know, myself and your public works director out and going, yep, we think this one's worse than this one, you actually get something that's not us making that decision, but it's, you know.
Something more behind it. Understood. The question that I have though is, let's say, how will we handle, and maybe we don't have an answer for this yet. But how will we handle, let's say I live on X Street, and X Street was in the last road survey, so that that's the worst one, and it should be on the next road program to be done. And that survey comes out that it's actually pretty good. It's got five years left. You know, how will we, and maybe we don't have that answer now, which is a fine answer. I'm just I I just want to make sure that we're prepared that there are people in the in the township, as I know that we all know, right?
Yep.
Sitting up here, who right, wrong, or different.
Think the roads are worse.
Or the worst roads in the world, and for those ones that are actually, you know, labeled right now as poor, I don't want to then feel like we're moving the goalposts from them.
Well, I mean, here, here, the truth of the matter is, if we went out and did a road program today and or a road evaluation today, even without this method, doing it a different method, and we spent the time to go through and actually evaluate all the roads, we may come back and say a road that we thought was poor really was in better shape than another road just because we went out, you know, every winter roads move up and down on the list. That's just the reality of what happens, and so the the question then becomes, you know, we told such and such a group that our intent was to do this in this period of time. Do we still move forward, or is there enough difference that you have to make an adjustment? And that's up to the board to decide as we get there. You know, we may make a recommendation based on something, you know, if 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 roads end up being relatively equal, this one's a little bit better, and this one's a little bit worse. And you've already committed to this one, we may say it makes sense to move on. The other thing that we've done too is we've said we should bundle roads that are near each other, and so sometimes a road that you would argue might be in fair condition, not poor condition, gets done at the same time, and there might be a road that's poor that's not getting done, but it makes sense because we get the best bid process by keeping the roads close together.
I said, okay. Any other questions? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to resolutions of legislation in action. Sixteen point one, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one Township Managers Compensation Supervisor Partridge.
Okay, resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash oh one, a resolution of the Township of Newtown in the County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania hereby states compensation of the Township Manager slash Secretary slash Treasurer. Whereas Article thirteen, section thirteen oh one B of the second class Uh, whereas Article uh thirteen, section thirteen oh one B of the second class uh. Township Code of the Commonwealth Pennsylvania states that the compensation of the Township Manager slash Secretary slash Treasurer. Shall be set by resolution by the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township. Now therefore be it resolved. That the annual compensation of the Township Manager slash Secretary slash Treasurer shall be one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Effective as of January second, two thousand twenty-three, to be paid in the same manner as other township employees unless authorized. By the Board of Supervisors at its discretion. In addition, the township will make a contribution of three thousand dollars to the Township Manager's Township Retirement Account. Resolve this third day of January, twenty twenty-three by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown. That's my motion.
Motion is made. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Last minute solicitor work, it's always fun in an active meeting. Uh, is there any other board, is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mister Chair, if I can, I would just like to say thank you. I look forward to continuing to serve the community, and I thank you for your support. Appreciate that.
We look forward to working with you again, Mister Neese. Thank you for what you do. And thank you to Kim, your wife, for allowing you to be out as much as you are, you know? It's not lost on us. Sixteen point two, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two, bank depositories Supervisor Roberts like cap.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two. Resolution of the Township of Newtown and the County of Delaware. Commonwealth Pennsylvania Bank Depositories, whereas the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown Delaware County, Pennsylvania desires to safely increase the investment potential. Of its money by investing from time to time in collateralized and federally insured obligations. With commercial banks or saving institutions chartered by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or the United States. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown. Delaware County, Pennsylvania, and it is hereby resolved by the authority of said supervisors that one. The proper officers of the Township of Newtown may execute such resolutions and documents. Necessary to establish and maintain federally insured and collateralized accounts. With commercial banks or saving institutions title but chartered. By the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or the United States. Two, the proper officers of the township shall be authorized to perform whatever all. Other acts that shall be necessary under the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or the United States to establish and maintain such accounts. As shall have been afford, afford said mention, uh, described. Three, it is the sense of the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown that the proper officers of the township shall be charged with. Choosing the appropriate federally insured and collateralized obligations. With Commonwealth, with commercial banks or saving institutions chartered by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or the United States. And that the proper officers shall seek to obtain the highest possible return. Consistent with the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania controlling second-class townships. Resolve this third day of January, twenty twenty-three by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown. That's my motion.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts like. Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts like cap. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Uh, is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Sixteen point three, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh three back bank signatories Supervisor Chanless.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh three signature resolution. Whereas the Township of Newtown Board of Supervisors has resolved to use TD Bank. And Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust as depositories. And desires to designate who is authorized to sign on behalf of the township. Specifically Leonard B. Altieri, the third Board Chairman, Tina Roberts Lightcap Supervisor. Edward Partridge Supervisor, Stephen M. Neese Township Manager slash Secretary, George Sharitz, Director of Public Works. Uh, and further resolved as otherwise set forth in the resolution itself this third day of January, twenty twenty-three. At regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next one will be resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four, resolution to approve the twenty twenty-three township fee schedule. And I'll just take this one. Uh, whereas from time to time, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown Delaware County, Pennsylvania reviews and revises various fees for services provided by the township. Now therefore, in consideration of the above, the ta- the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown does hereby resolve as follows, one. The Township of Newtown's comprehensive fee schedule attached to this resolution as exhibit A is approved. Two, the township administration is directed to make this fee schedule available to the public and charge fees for services con- consistent therewith. Resolve this third day of January, twenty twenty-three. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by uh, the Chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mister Chairman, I would make note on the fee schedule, just in case anybody was wondering, there were basically uh. Changes based on salary changes uh that needed to be made regarding what it would cost if somebody wanted us, one of our. Police officers to show up, there was a bill per hour. Same thing for public works, those type of changes were in there. The only other change that was in the fee schedule uh under our. Um, uh, stormwater, there was a section that actually had a application fee based on thousands of square foot in. Impacted, we reviewed that, uh, because it has a escrow, there was no need to have that. Per thousand square feet, so we changed that to be a flat fee plus the escrow. Those are the changes.
Understood. Thank you very much, Mister Neese. Okay. Uh, we'll now move down to section seventeen, additional business. I see no additional business from the board. Items for the next agenda, is there, uh, now move down to nineteen, board comment. Is there any board comment? Uh, we'll now move down to section twenty, public comment. If there's any members of the audience who have any public comment regarding anything, whether it's on the agenda or not, please come up to the. Podium, state your name, address for the record. Seeing none, we'll move down to adjournment. Uh, this meeting is adjourned until our next meeting, uh, which is the fourth Monday in uh. I think it's the January twenty-third. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.
Well, like sometimes, I, I probably didn't say that well, did I?